...meeting for May 23rd. I welcome you and invite you to join us to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, your right, through the double doors, turn left, down the stairway at the base of the stair, turn left again, and go directly out of the building. The quickest and safest, the fastest way perhaps would be to the rear of the chambers, through the double doors, down the stairs. But in either case, again, walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, please take the role.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFicus. Absent Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Pachinella.
Here.
Richard Suzak is here, and Gere Moselizar is absent.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. There are no minutes because of... There aren't any minutes, I guess.
We'll have them for you at the next meeting. I guess there was some discrepancy between...
Staff was all at a conference.
Yeah, we were away. It was, yeah. So, we'll have them for you.
So, we will have them at the next meeting for you. So, right now, we're into public participation, and we ask, we welcome your comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who's present, provided you may not discuss any matter of business that is on the agenda for this evening, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission? Yes.
Steve Cogtulla to South River Street. And I know the commission is getting a lot of bad rap regarding the two projects on South River Street. I just want to say, we know that you're not responsible as a result of the zone change request that we're... Zone changes that were implemented has anything to do with that. I just want to put that on the record. And the people I talked to, I'm clarifying that with them. But I do feel that over the last 10 years, we have been lied to by various committees and commissions regarding the transit concept, the intermodal transportation concept or vision that's been going on. And all the meetings that I've attended in the past, we were assured that even with the conceptual drawings, how elaborate they were, that they would never acquire or seek acquiring privately owned properties. And yet, before us, that's what we have. And so, I'd like to discuss those two projects on South River Street, and that is the river access, which is an option, and the South River Street Bridge replacement, which is a necessity. And a couple of misconceptions I'd like to clear up regarding them is that I'm hearing from public officials that, well, we're getting the direction from the state, we have to do certain things because the state is requiring us to do that. Well, that's a fallacy. That's untrue. And that's supported by meeting minutes of the May 6th council meeting by Mark Burns, who was a DOT representative. Also, what's being stated is that, well, in order to do the bridge, we have to take acquisition of the properties. That's also false as well. And I'll get into that a little bit. But that's also corroborated by the meeting minutes of the council meetings of March, of May 6th. And with regard to the bridge, Mark Burns made it very clear that if the town wants to scale that back, they can do so. Of course, it would eliminate the six-foot-wide walkway, and a six-foot-wide walkway is about the length of the town hall here, and it's really, it's unnecessary. And the reason is, is because what Mark Burns was stating is that the bridge can be reduced from 24 feet in width. I believe it was two 10-foot lanes with two foot shoulders to a 20-foot wide bridge with two 10-foot lanes. And to give you some perspective, you have currently two 11-foot lanes there right now in existence. However, the 22 feet has never been utilized for half a century, 49 years to be specific. The north end is 17 feet, and the south end is 18 feet. It's been bottlenecked like that for years. And there's no reason for it. I don't know why the town never completed the bridge project. They did do an acquisition of land, the same land that they want now, back in 1970, to complete that north side. Never did it. And that road, being the width as it is, and the narrowness of the bridge, has supported vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian, wheelchair traffic without any problems at all. No complaints, no incidents in a half a century. So, when I hear that you need a six-foot-wide sidewalk for safety reasons, I think history speaks for itself and invalidates that, that statement. With regard to the bridge, it stated that if we do, if the bridge is reduced, while there's some issues about railroad being, the road being on railroad property, encroaching on railroad property was the exact statement. And it just surprises me, after 140 years that South River Street has been established, and we've passed and repassed on that road, all of a sudden now, it's on railroad property. If you look at the railroad map that was provided to me from 1915, and they also provided a deed from 1892, the two don't coincide, and no one's explained that to me yet. However, let's just say the worst-case scenario, that it is on railroad property. Well, Section 8 of the railroad valuation map, but I'll tell you how you can pull those up so you can see this for yourself. Section 8, where this South River Street encroaches, well, so does Main Street. Section 7 on the railroad map, an entire section of Main Street encroaches on it. If you look at Section 4 of that railroad map, where the Asdunthick Street Bridge is, that encroaches on it. You can't even get into 33 North River Street into the front door without going on railroad property, and I could go on with North River Street. Half of the road, to the length of the road, is on railroad property. I physically did some measuring to confirm that. So, for someone to make that statement, I think it's really ludicrous, because there's obviously some easement that the town has with the railroad. When asked about an easement with a state representative, didn't answer the question. When asked with the town personnel, town personnel said, well, you have to talk to the state. Another issue is that we talked to the town, the town says, well, we've had communication, well, some people in the town said, we've had communication with the Amtrak. Talked to another person in the town, and that's reflected in the meeting minutes of May 6th, well, there was no communication with the town. I mean, what are we supposed to believe? And this is a problem. And so, if in fact, there are people think that there's a safety issue with regard to the road not being wide enough to accommodate the various types of traffic going down there, you have to remember, 120 feet away, just on the east side of the bridge, of the railroad underpass, they're building an $850,000 pedestrian walkway, bicycle and pedestrian, 850,000 steel truss bridge 120 feet away from that. So, it doesn't make too, it doesn't make sense to have that type of redundancy, particularly when you're talking about acquisition of a full property, knocking a house down, and that acquisition, another partial acquisition where you're taking 20 feet off of a side of a house, off of the side yard of a house. That just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, and I really think the main reason for this is that this vision of the transit-oriented development, I think we need to take a look at that a little bit, because, you know, before, when you had the conceptual drawings, you had this gigantic train station. Then it got reduced by a state design, both on the west side of the tracks. Now, it's reduced to a platform on the east side of the tracks, and that's not even approved. You have the building on 33 North River Street, which was supposed to be rehabbed in 2016. It was supposed to be mixed-use apartments and storefronts, and it had a restaurant on the top. What's going on with that? Twenty, in 2008, there was a $4,000 price tag to rehab it. I can imagine what the price tag is now. Then you got the Eversource property. That's been in negotiations for 10 years. Now, it's supposed to be acquired, I believe, in toward the end of September, toward the end of the summer or early fall. Even if it's acquired, how long's it gonna take to clean up? Five years? 10 years down the road? So, I would really like to see something happen with those properties. And not to mention, 28 South River Street, the Strand, 32 Church Street, just talking about the area of the transit-oriented development. Let's see something happen there. This is, to me, this is a perfect example of putting the cart before the horse. Okay? It's actually an excellent example of what not to do as far as planning goes. An excellent example of planning at its worst. You know, and when I think about this, I think about the realignment of North Main Street, where they knocked all the buildings down back in, I think, early 70s. And then now it's called revitalization. You ask somebody now, oh, it was a mistake. This is a mistake. I'm not saying that maybe sometime in the future that this could, that this should happen. But until something materializes, you don't start taking people's privately owned properties for a vision that may not occur. And I ask that if anything comes before this council in the future, get all the facts, because the council approved this as it was designed, and at that public meeting on 417, no one spoke in favor of this at all. And no one was ever made, except for myself, I wasn't made aware a little bit earlier, but as far as providing any input, none. No one was provided, the ability to provide input to the design on this, unlike what you guys did with the, with the planning and with the zoning, the zoning changes. And so, I would just ask again, if this comes before you folks, look at the whole picture before you make any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the commission? Anyone else would like to address the commission? Last call to address the commission. Okay, here, moving on, bond releases. We have two, I believe, two requests, and you have quite a lot of information on it.
So, this is regarding the river overlook and River Meadow subdivisions. They basically want to finish the roads over there, and it was recommended by engineering, given the amount of time that has passed since the base of the roads were put down, that if the town were to adopt the roads, the base of the road should be replaced, given the condition that it's in. So, in order to do that, given the cost, they would like to have their cash bonds released and to ensure that we have something in place in case the work doesn't get done after we release the bond, we're asking for a surety to be filed prior to the release of the bond. And really, this is just before you to see if that's something that you would be amenable to. So, you received a memo from Lori, and on the back, she put a motion, or a draft motion for you guys to consider if you would like to...
Hate to admit it, but I was on the commission at the time this went through, and there, as it has here, there were two really developments. The first was, as it says, states, only a few lots were able to be developed because there was only one entrance. And it really ended up as a, I believe, a circle, as I remember. And then later, they purchased a house, yeah, Bridge Lane, and were able to make another exit, which opened up the land back, and then they could further develop. But I thought the second development was going to be developed by individual contractors, or was being developed by individual contractors. So, when it comes to the bonding, my question was, who's gonna put up the bonds, and where does the money go back when it's given?
Well, there's also a third development.
Yeah.
A third development off of the side street there that goes towards Enfield High, they put a cul-de-sac in.
Right.
That doesn't tie into the two streets, but that is part of that subdivision.
Oh, all right. There's another one.
You know, and I kind of agree with what you're saying, Charlie. Why would you release the bond? And the road's not done, and if the road's in poor condition, you know, that subdivision's been going 15, 18 years, if not longer. I'd be concerned about releasing them.
Well, the, I know that the, she quotes the state law, and I recall, I came through because we had a discussion on that, that they were given extensions. Was it state regulation?
Right. So...
So, they were given, they used, apparently used that extension. But again, I don't, I'm not aware of bonds, and it goes on, that the town recommended surety bond is adequate to satisfy Enfield Department of Public Works, but I don't know what a surety bond is or what it does.
So, I've reviewed the file for all of this pretty extensively. It's a lot of information. There are two separate subdivisions. There's a three-lot subdivision that's separate from, I think, what, Charlie, you were referencing, which is the 15-lot subdivision, which does create a circle and has two different cul-de-sacs. But there is the three-lot subdivision.
I'm sorry, there was, right, there was one up above by the owner's house that didn't go down the hill.
Right.
That's way up on the top.
Right.
That's not even on, because that's not even quoted here.
So, yeah, it's PH 2479.
Well, that's a three-lot subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but that's not off of...
Bridge.
Bridge.
Right, it's off the other street.
That's off the other street. Yeah, I can't recall the name of that street.
Riverview Street.
It's Riverview Street, all right. So, there's Riverview Street, and then there's two more. Right, I'm sorry.
Right.
Stand corrected.
Both of them, they were approved, they had, obviously, the standard five years to get the work done. They bonded for the roads only. And then that state statute kicked in that allowed them to do the work for nine years. They ran out of time on that, too, so they asked for an extension for another five years, and that was in 2015. And that was approved. So, they do have until 2020 to complete the work on the roads.
Do the three divisions, subdivisions now, are they all one person?
They were...
One developer?
No. So, some of the houses were developed, some were not. They did sell all of the lots in the, all of the incomplete lots. Obviously, the lots that were completed are now owned by homeowners, but the lots that were not completed have been sold. So, PAPUS is, the PAPUS is really just, they have the roads, and they want to get the roads adopted by the town, and it was recommended by the engineering office that they replace the base coat, and that's what, where the extra expense is coming for, that they didn't, they didn't really account for when they filed the bonds, having to replace the base coat and then put the top coat on.
Who does the original bond, if all three are separated, who does the original bond go back to?
PAPUS.
PAPUS, the PAPUS is, the people who filed the bond.
All three of them? But who was legally responsible for finishing the roads?
PAPUS.
The PAPUS is, yeah.
And she just sold it, and now she's trying to get her bond released, and our staff is saying that the base coat, which is 20 years old...
Right, right.
...is failing.
Right.
So, we release her bond, she sold the property already.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I don't know who...
They still own, so they still own the roads. So, the town does not have to accept the roads until they're in such a condition and they meet the standards of the requirements of the...
I understand what you're saying, and sitting on the town council, we've dealt with this. They own the roads, they stop paying tax on them, they walk away from them, like several developers do in this town. The town forecloses and ends up with the roads anyways.
Yeah.
Right, so...
And that's their easy way out, because she probably owns them under an LLC or a corp, not her personal self. And that's how they wash their hands of this and stick it to the taxpayers of Enfield. She started the subdivision 20 years ago. It's not this commission or the town's fault that she waited 20 years to put the top coat down. I understand why you do that, but...
But now, if she sold individual lots...
Yeah, the question that I have is that if all the lots are already sold, then realistically, there's really no reason why that road cannot be finished, because of the fact that, you know, that there's no impetus for them not to finish the road right now. So, realistically, they should finish the road, and then we release their bond. And until they...
They want to finish it.
Well, they do want to finish it, and that's the, that's sort of what...
But that shouldn't be coming from us.
I agree.
Well, that's why I basically am getting to.
Right, that should not be our...
You have the individual lots, you said, are sold.
Right, well, what the...
And who's gonna, I mean, if they get stuck with a thing and they have no finished coat...
This plan, so this, what we're proposing here is not to release the bonds right now. This is just to approve the sequence at which they get the work done. So, what we would want to do is, before any bonds are released, they filed cash bonds, so they gave us actual checks.
Right.
For like $150,000-something thousand. They want to get that released. We're saying that we wouldn't have, we wouldn't put that before you for a release until we have a surety bond, which is through, usually through like Western Surety. Basically, you have the money, the town can access the money to complete the roads if it needs to, and the person who files the bond has to pay a certain amount to the company to keep those bonds current.
Well, that's what I said, I didn't know...
But the surety bond is under the corporation's name, so when the corporation goes defunct, nobody's paying the surety bond anymore. There's no money for the town to collect. The town, the town council has a list of properties throughout town...
Yeah.
...that builders have just walked away from, you know, because we didn't want to accept it as open space, they don't want to keep paying tax on it. So, what do they do? They change the name of the business, and they keep doing it again and again. Correct, Jenny?
Yes.
They're all over town, and we have the cash, securing these roads are gonna be done right now. They need to be done with cash, not a, they didn't start with a surety, they shouldn't finish with it.
I agree with you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In a normal course of action, the town accepts surety bonds for the roadways, correct? And in this case, they put up a cash bond?
I believe state statute allows you to collect bonds if you've, after you've already sold the lots, so they can collect cash bond, or any bonds.
But in a normal course of a subdivision approval, the town would accept a surety bond or cash. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're looking to substitute that. So, I know what surety bonds are all about, and they're there to protect the town, the town would be indemnified should that party go defunct. Then the town has recourse to go after the surety bond. I deal with that situation quite often, and so, I don't have an issue with surety bonds as long as it's acceptable to the financial department, the finance director of the town, and it's a certain AAA company that issues them. My big concern is that the bond was issued for $152,000. How long ago?
Twelve.
So, I feel like the engineer should do another estimate, because it could be $300,000 today, in that if they're gonna do that, that that surety bond should cover today's cost of the improvements, and not just $152,000.
She waited that long.
And then there should be a form of a developer's agreement that, and this should be timed out, too, that they've got a year or two to complete the work. But, you know, with stipulations such as that, I, you know, I would feel comfortable with a surety bond as long as it's a...
Yeah, and that's another thing, is when the, when the subdivisions were approved, one of the conditions of approval was that a developer's agreement, agreement did need to be filed. It has not been filed, or at least if it was, it's not in our files. So, that's one of the things that is part of the, part of the process that Lori listed on here as needing to be done, and that's what the town attorney has recommended, is to accept a developer's agreement prior to all of this, so...
So, the individual lot owners that bought the individual lots are stuck, because you say you wouldn't issue any building permits to any of these lots.
OCOs.
So, those people would be stuck if this isn't finished.
Well, let me ask you, when did the town start accepting surety bonds? Because when we built Bellewood, it was either cash or a letter of credit from the bank.
No, it was a letter of credit, but it also was insurance, not surety bonds, insurance company bonds. And there's a difference, even though they're, they're done by, along with insurance, surety bonds are totally aside from insurance bonds.
I just, we have the money. The roads are failing. Why would you give the money back before the roads are done, considering she sold the property? I don't understand it.
There's really no reason why she would, again, she could possibly just walk away, stop paying for the surety bonds, and then once the surety bonds are no longer supported, then the surety company says, well, I don't necessarily have to pay you anything, because the person who was paying, you know, the fee to ensure that the surety bonds were active has no longer paid me, so I don't have to pay you to do something that I haven't been paid to do. So, in that sense, I agree with Mr. Nelson in terms of, you know, if it had, if it took already 20 years, how many more years is it gonna take to complete this project? And, you know, could somebody walk away by just changing a corporation name to say that I no longer own it, and, you know, the town is stuck with it? And I would have to agree that if this has happened previously, that, you know, you fooled me once, you know, shame on, you fooled me twice, shame on me. So, you know, I don't think that we should necessarily, you know, go down this road unless we have some positive way of ensuring that a person, you know, cannot walk away and that it, you know, it's, we can get the money if it's not done in a timely fashion.
The surety bond is prepaid 100% upfront, number one. The, it would, and it would support a developer's agreement, that's what it's, that's what it's ensuring that the surety is tied into the developer's agreement. If they're in default of the developer's agreement, then the town has an obligation to notify the surety and say that they're in default, and they call in the bond. And it's pretty, pretty basic. That's, that's how it works. So, it'll never get timed out because of lack of payment, because it is paid 100% upfront. They can't get the surety bond unless it's paid for, and it would be tied into a contract or an agreement.
Again, again, is it an indefinite agreement that, you know, the thing is, insurance is only good as long as you pay your insurance. And as soon as you default paying on your insurance, the insurance company says, your, our agreement, or surety, or whatever, you know, nothing ever lasts forever unless you give them the actual amount of money that you're gonna be paid, paid out, because ultimately, they're liable for that payment. And it doesn't make sense to me that, you know, somebody would, you know, again, be able to not default on something if they weren't paid in full for the amount of money that they could possibly be paying out, because, you know, it just by the return system that, you know, it's a pyramid scheme, where, you know, if you don't have enough money, you're never gonna be able to pay out enough. So, you know, in that sense, I think that, you know, depending on, you know, how confident we are that this is gonna get finished, that we should tread lightly before we go forward.
I would certainly defer to the finance department and the legal department, but a surety is a much better guarantee than a letter of credit from a bank.
But if she hasn't had a contractor's agreement...
But is it better than cash?
Cash is king.
Is $152,000 gonna finish the road in today's dollars? And you might have an opportunity to increase that to $300,000 if that's the fact, because if that's 20-year-old number, it's certainly a lot more money right now, so...
Absolutely, I agree with that. I mean, there's a lot of road down there.
Again, I would have the engineer look at the roadway and do a revised estimate in today's dollars to see if that $152,000 is adequate, or if it needs to be bumped to today's dollars.
He probably will. This, this, I guess, list of steps in the process really has been solidified by both Lori, the town attorney, the town engineer. I'm not sure if the finance director was in there, too, but...
Well, there was a period of time we had a lot of trouble collecting on bonds. I know it's when banks were having problems, and some of them were disappearing, but and we weren't, we got stuck with a lot of bonds. Lot of paper. Doing a lot of paper, yeah. So, I don't know of the situation, that's why I asked, I'm not...
If John is correct, I'm not that familiar with surety bonds. We've always done letter of credits or cash. But it says, "The applicant shall file surety bonds in adequate amount to satisfy Enfield Department of Public Works." I think you're looking at more like $1 million by the time you rip the base up, put a new base down, and then the top coat on those roads. So, if that's the case there, but the first one is what gets me, "The applicant must finalize a developer's agreement for both subdivisions." They haven't done it in 20 years.
Haven't done it, yeah, that's why I said that...
So, I mean, why are we gonna show common courtesy for somebody who hasn't followed protocol for 20 years?
I don't know why the town didn't get the development...
Charlie?
Yes.
I don't know as much about surety bonds as John does, but I know a little bit about it. And my question is, can she, can the company... And my question is, can she, can the company that built River, whatever it is, River, can they get a surety bond when they don't own it anymore?
Well, that's what I.
They own the road.
They own the road?
They own the road?
Yeah.
That's what they're trying to get the town to adopt. Okay.
But the people who live on those roads, you think about it. It's going to end up being, if she walks away right now, if John's correct, which I think he's very correct on the dollar amount, and she says, "Whoa, if that's a million dollars to finish those roads, keep the hundred and fifty. See you later." The town is going to foreclose on the roads. They have to. Because we've allowed people to buy property on those roads, and they have to access their homes. Shame on the town for only having a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on hand. But I would really want an attorney's opinion on the surety bond. I know he knows what he's talking about, but I want to hear it from them. And then I would want our engineering department to put some real numbers on all that roadway down there that's got to get replaced and redone. And that's what that surety bond would have to cover before I even consider this.
Okay, so I think that's what John says and what you say.
Well, I'm going off of John. I mean.
Get the figures from engineering.
We should table it.
And then also get the information you want from the town of finance.
Right. I want the, you know, rule of thumb, what's top dog, next down, next down. Obviously, a letter of credit, I would say, is the lowest. I want a legal opinion.
They meant, yes, when they was, when they had the problems.
You're good with that, John?
Is it the finance director you'd want?
And engineering.
And engineering.
Yeah, yeah.
At least.
Okay, so you want real numbers, real numbers from engineering for all the roadways?
Yeah, update to current, to today's numbers, today's dollars, yeah.
Look how much oil's gone up in the last twenty years.
Yeah.
Well, that's blacktop.
And, but you want not only just the, what has, you want the, what is it, grinding?
Well, you want the subbase replaced, or the base replaced, if that's what the town's requiring.
Plus, so you want to rip up the base?
Right.
So you want the total figure of the roadway, the base and?
I would leave it to the town engineer to decide, the scope of work, and then he can estimate it.
You want the town engineer.
To evaluate the current base condition, recommendation whether it should be replaced, repaired, whatever, and a top coat.
And the price.
You know, you've got all the curbing and everything else in there too.
And you also want the finance director to go over the bonding and so forth, or what?
A legal opinion on the surety bond, whether they're, I mean, the way he's saying it, it makes sense, and the way this is written.
When a town puts out contracts for bids, let's say it's a five million dollar roadway reconstruction, they require a surety bond that the contractor has to post, has to put up as surety in case he defaults on the contractor, goes bankrupt, and leaves the work unattended to. Then the town has got the surety bond company to go after to complete the work. And it happens quite often, and that's what they accept. And it's an industry standard in all of construction throughout the country.
Don't they look at the assets of the company and everything to issue that surety bond?
Correct.
So when you're talking an individual homeowner, you've been in business years and years, and, you know.
Yeah. This developer would have to put up assets. There's a formula that they would use, enough of assets, and able to get a bond for X amount of dollars. So they're actually putting up something. They're putting up personal assets.
If they have it.
If they have it. If they don't have it, they won't be able to get the bond.
Right.
So they have to have backing.
Right.
Yeah, you just can't buy it like insurance.
Right. So, good. Make a motion to table?
Well, yeah, but I think you want a motion first that we discuss who you want in here so you can get the information.
I think we got the, I wrote down here that you're looking for memos from town attorney, the finance director, and the engineering department for what's the best form of.
Do you want the, do you want those individuals here to discuss it, or do you want?
No, I don't.
Just, okay.
I was just going to get memos, if that's okay.
Then just, do you want a motion then to?
Motion to table?
No, the motion to have these people and then table, because we have discussed it.
Right, she wrote it all down already.
That's all right, but you still would need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we request some additional information from the town attorney, to the town engineer, and the finance director to evaluate the best path of action for us to ensure that the town does not get.
That's still not what you want, because you want the figures.
Right.
And if you say that, you're going to get what basically you already have.
Well, we want an updated value for the replacement of the roads and the base coat, and the exact definition of how a surety bond works, and whether it would be beneficial for us to get that in lieu of the cash payment that we have right now.
Second.
And you want the town attorneys too? Well, I don't know. Okay, a motion's made. The second discussion on the motion. Okay, then all in favor? All right, good.
I'll make a motion to table this request for bond release PH 2479 and 2526 until we get the information that we requested.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I was thinking the one in the south end, I remember we had trouble with the one, where you started developing. That was a big one. Okay. Site plan SPR 17425 Hazard Avenue.
They have requested once again to be tabled. They still have until your next meeting.
We have that in writing again.
I have the, in my email, he sent back the form that we usually send out. I didn't get a chance to print it late in the day, but.
It is signed?
Yep.
All right.
Do we still have enough time?
We do.
Yes, she says yes.
We do?
We do have until your next meeting, and then they either have to withdraw.
I would ask, I asked her to ask them if they would rather withdraw now, because they've had so many extensions, and then they haven't been able to produce for one reason or another. I wish they had withdrawn before, then we'll deny it without prejudice, or, you know. But they apparently want to keep it on there. But I don't know if you're going to have a whole brand-new application, or what's going to go on. All right, I would prefer that they had withdrawn, but.
It's their choice.
That's their choice. Because it's a, they're pushing it, because what's the date? They got two days about after the next meeting, something like that.
Right, yeah.
Right, but they're still approved. Their original plan is approved.
Yeah.
It's just the changes they decided to make.
Yeah, well, because of the, our engineering. All right, the motion is in order.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we table SPR 1774 to our next meeting of June 13th.
Second.
Motion's made. Second, all in favor? Denominous. Public hearing, 2940 90 Enfield Streets, the Dunkin' Donuts, and the secretary take the role and read the legal notice.
Charles Durin.
Here.
Charles Lad.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Linda DeGray will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Is the applicant here?
To read the public notice. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 23rd, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2940 90 Enfield Street, special use permit application for a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through to be located on an existing building. 90 Enfield Incorporated owner Carlos Santano, applicant MAP 35, lot 41 and 42, BG Zone, King Street, Enfield Street Design Overlay District.
Gentlemen, you know the routine. Please identify yourselves with your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I am Dana Steele, a professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing Carlos Caetano, who's the applicant for this property at 90 Enfield Street. Carlos owns a number of Dunkin' franchises in town, and is looking to occupy a vacant space on the ground floor of the existing building at 90 Enfield Street. And so I'd like to move over to the, to the plan and run through it with you. But first, I do have this, this is a public hearing, and the hearing sign was posted at the site, and I have the affidavit to submit. Okay, so this, this site is located at the intersection of Bright Meadow Boulevard. There's a traffic light there on Route 5, and the light services the access to this, to this site. It's a little unusual. The parcel is only a half an acre. It's this pink area here, which encompasses the building and the front parking area. But the surrounding property is owned by Eversource. There's these overhead power lines that run to the left of the site, and Eversource owns this property. But the owner of 90, of 90 Enfield, Inc., has a lease agreement with Eversource, which is this yellow area. So the pink area and the yellow area combined is the total development area of this site. So it involves two different properties, but, and this is, this is an existing, an existing site, an existing parking lot, an existing building. What we're proposing from a site standpoint is very, is very minimal. There's a concrete island on the southwest side of the building. As you're looking at the building from the street on the left-hand side, that's going to be removed to make room for a drive-through lane. And then we have existing landscape islands in the back that are in yellow, and we're going to be shifting them to the green areas so that we can accommodate a new parking layout that makes room for a drive-through lane along the backside of the building. So this is what the site looks like in the proposed condition, with the elimination of the ninety-degree parking on the left side, and turning those into parallel spaces, leaving some area for a loading zone, which doesn't currently exist, and a new dumpster pad in the back, in the pink here, and this drive-through lane. So traffic would come in, go around the islands, and to get in line for the drive-through, and the order menu would be at this, this concrete pad here, which is shown in pink. And then the pickup would be at the window in this, at this concrete pad, also shown in pink. To update the building and to identify this new use, because the building is very uniform-looking now, all split-face block, two-story, with signs over each of the uses, to make it stand out a little more, they're proposing awnings over the windows. And so they would be orange awnings, a Dunkin' color that you're probably familiar with.
It says red in the thing.
It looks red to you?
It says red.
Oh, I think in the staff report, yeah. I think, yeah, I think Lori looked at it as red, but I think it's.
I guess it's a matter of opinion.
Dunkin' Donuts is orange.
Yeah. We consider it an orange color. I think maybe that's just a, it is a darker orange, so it becomes maybe subjective what color you consider it. But we did provide some photos of what those awnings look like.
Yeah, but they hang on the building, and if you, you're with this, and it's a two-story building, and these do look red. They don't look, they don't look orange, where the Dunkin' Donuts are orange anyhow. Those are definitely red.
Can I address some pretty major issues that I see? I'm going to stand up, so.
Use the microphone, Kenny.
So you're going to come in this way. You're going to come down here. Your exit for your drive-through has to cross this lane of traffic, correct? You're going to continue around, continue around. Well, if you stay in the proper lane, you're head-on with this. So you're going to have to have cars doing, crossing each other here. Nobody in the United States drives that way. You're creating such a traffic accident.
Yeah, you're right. This is, this is a typo. That's going the wrong direction. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Which is like London.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I didn't, I didn't notice that. So see how this looks? Correct. It should have been over there, unless it got, it got rotated, and I didn't notice.
And you do have the drive-through exiting across the traffic that's pulling in.
It's an intersection, yeah.
Yeah, because I know they have an intersection like this in Hazardville at the Dunkin' Donuts. It's in a strip mall, and it's a major problem right there. And last, the address on this building is also wrong. It's 88 Enfield Street.
78, no.
Well, we can correct the address, and I can correct the arrow that is going the wrong direction on the back of the, back of the site. As for the concern about, about this, the congestion here, I would acknowledge it's not, it's not ideal, but it is, has the proper aisle width. It's a, it's, it's not a, the traffic's not moving fast in this way, because it's a lot of, a lot of turns. You got to turn, and then a turn again, so you can't, you can't build up much speed.
Seven o'clock in the morning, somebody's late to work. They want their coffee. And you have somebody parked at the end of that spot there.
Right here?
Somebody's turning out of that drive-through, and somebody's whipping around the corner of that building.
That's a problem.
They have, it's visible. You can, you can see. It's not, it's not obstructed.
How is it visible if there's a van there?
What about?
I do have to say something. It's last night at around 5:00. I did go and look at the site. I was on a motorcycle, so we're not talking car width. And there was two cars that were queued up to turn left at the light.
Okay.
And I barely was able to get around them. So we're not talking a car width, we're talking motorcycle width. And it was a little hairy, and I, and I have to agree with you with them queuing up for the light if they have to take a left, or to go straight across to go down to.
Phoenix.
To Phoenix, because you're going to have cars that are going to want to come in, get their coffee, and then if they're going across the street to go to work, take a left, go into Mass, whatever, you're going to have a big traffic issue, because people are going to come in. They're going to start queuing up onto Enfield Street. And, yeah.
How will they?
Because the traffic, because you'll have cars that'll be blocking their ability to turn left once they get into the driveway.
Coming off the highway.
Coming off.
This is a 24-foot aisle. It's wide enough for two-way traffic.
It's wide enough, but I got my coffee. I got to go to work. What am I going to do? I'm going to pull up. And then you've got cars stacking at the light. They're either going to be able to take that right, or they're going to be within that property, but then you've got cars that are coming off of Route 5 to go in there to get their coffee. You're going to have them stacking up onto Route 5. And I need to get to 91. I'm not going to be happy sitting there waiting for cars to make their right-hand turn to get to 91. It's, I, I think, you know. And then when I was leaving the property, again, I stopped at the light, because I was making a left-hand turn. There was a car that was parked in one of those spots right behind me. She had a really hard time backing up and turning around to, to get behind me to make her left-hand turn. So it was an experience that I had, and there's not even a lot of traffic in there yet. So I, the parking in front might be. So, I, the parking in front might be an issue, I know you can't take that away, because there's other businesses in there, but I can see some...
Or they should move the handicap over.
There's, I just, I was only there for like 15, 20 minutes, and saw some issues. And, you don't even have this place up and running yet.
Well, you do have, you do have a light at the driveway, so, I mean, most sites don't have that benefit.
The light is great, I like the idea, but, if I'm heading south, and I can go, turn right in there, and there's cars that have blocked my ability to go in and take a left, to go around to the back of the building, and there's a few other cars behind me that wanna also go in there, you're gonna start queuing up on...
You need to lay it out, to lay it out.
Right, you're gonna have cars stacking up on Route 5, because they can't, they're in the lot, they're partially into the lot, because no, the light's there, hasn't changed yet, cars can't take a left or go straight across.
Do you think cars coming in here are not gonna be able to turn left?
Exactly, especially if you're early morning, trying to go to work.
The cars that are leaving are on this side, so there's a lane on this side.
But they're also going to block that ability, come on, we all ride down roads, and lights turn, or whatever, and people are trying to get through a light, and it stopped, or whatever, they're halfway through an intersection.
Here?
I've gotta get up.
Yeah, I had to stay right, she's thinking of the right turn, and correct it.
All right, so, I came in here, there was already a car here at the light, sorry, right here, and then there was another car right there. I had to swing all the way over here to go through, and I came around, which was fine. Then, I came out, I was here at the light, lady was parked here. She, because of the distance, she really had to back up like that, and turn, to make her left-hand turn behind me, that's the issue. So if you've got cars coming out, because hey, everybody has to have their coffee in the morning, I'm one of those people, all right? I'm going to have cars stacking here, they're gonna come out, so, this is starting to build up, because they're gonna either take a left, or they're gonna go across. Now you've got this line of cars, the ones that can turn right are great, but it's the ones that are gonna turn left, or go straight across, they're gonna start to stack up here, and, okay, this guy's waiting, he pulls forward, the next one pulls forward, the light still hasn't changed.
Right, so we need to make sure, if these cars are leaving, don't pull out and block this aisle.
Right, and then, so now that you've got these cars...
You need a sign that says, "Do not block aisles."
Something, something.
I think a stop sign first, and then say, "Do not block intersection," second.
Stop sign and...
Because I think that stop sign is key to getting people to stop, because I've seen that at other businesses, where they put a stop sign right there at the end of the drive-through, because I really think that requires people to stop and really look at what's going on around them traffic-wise. You know, so I think that that's an important piece, and then, "Do not block the intersection," and go from there.
Yeah, you're gonna need something, it's just, that was, like I said, I was there maybe 15 minutes.
If that happens, it could be, it could be an issue, I agree.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure that those using it understand that they can't wait in areas that are gonna block that access.
Right. Can we guarantee 100% that won't happen? No. But, if we put this...
You can't guarantee people will obey signs.
Right, but, you know what, if the signs are there...
We can do everything we can.
Right, at least if you have something there, then people will be a little bit more aware.
Yes, go ahead.
I had a concern with, a little different, if you look at the parking spaces, 17, 18, 19, and 20, people are gonna be pulling in and parking there, well, if they wanna go in the building, they're gonna be crossing two-way traffic, and I don't even see, I don't even see where there's a walkway painted for them.
Well, there's this hatch area separating the drive aisle and the aisle, but anyone parking here is walking across an aisle too, there's no hatchway, I mean, I'd be happy to put in a hatchway here, but it's really only servicing, servicing space 17.
Well, the only reason I thought of that is, if you go over to the, I know this is Dunkin' Donuts, but if you go over to the McDonald's in the Kohl's Plaza, you used to be, take your life in your hands, trying to get from your car to the door to go inside, because the traffic was just going everywhere, and it was a big mess. That's why I thought I'd bring this up now. And also, my other question is, is it's an Eversource lease, I'm sorry, not lease, and is this something that can be renewed?
Oh yeah, absolutely, it is continually renewed, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what the term is, do you remember, Carlos?
The term, the lease term?
How many years it is?
I think it goes on a five-year lease.
Five-year, and every five years it's renewed.
Okay, thank you.
What happens if Eversource doesn't renew it?
They always do.
How about Mary Eusa?
Yep.
I just have one more. One more, okay, and I don't know, but you also have another exit in the back, to go between the existing, that roadway, that goes between the garage and the motorcycle shop. Do you have an agreement with them, that people can use that as a throughway? Because the motorcycle shop has like a little deck-type thing on their property for their entrance, and right next to that is a handicap space, so I'm just thinking, people, you know, shooting in, and going around, and come whipping, and...
See, there's this striped area here, on Sheet 2, that's an access right-of-way that's in favor of Eversource, it's not in favor of Dunkin', or the owner of 90 Enfield.
Okay, so, they do have that access then?
No.
No, they don't, so...
It's a blocked office.
Not officially, but there's nothing blocking people from...
Well, that's what she's after.
That's my question, because there was cars behind the garage, and motorcycles parked outside the motorcycle shop, which makes all sense, and then that handicap space that was kind of in that right-of-way, so it's...
Yep, right here.
Yeah, that...
It's an existing condition, I mean, we're not, we don't have any control over it, so we couldn't even propose to make changes to it if we wanted to.
I just see that, you know, you have like an exit in the back, to use that.
In other words, somebody's going to find out it exists, and instead of using your pattern to get out of there...
Using the light, yeah, they're probably gonna wanna go out at the light, because it'd be easier, but if it's not a busy time, maybe, maybe they'll want it, not have to wait for a light.
They're scooting in.
That's right, we're getting in.
I think...
Getting in, yeah.
I think what you're getting at, Donna, or Linda, is they have an arrow showing traffic going that way, which they don't have a right to do, so that arrow shouldn't be there either. That arrow's going the wrong way, this arrow's pointing to property you don't even own, to send the traffic. And with the van here, you have zero sightline for these cars coming around the corner, and this car coming out.
With a van here?
If you had an ADA van parked in this spot, somebody coming out here, and somebody coming around the corner, these people have no choice but to nudge out or pull out, because there is zero sightline right there.
Yeah, they'll have to pull out far enough so they can see.
Well, the problem is, how far can you pull out before you clip the car coming around the corner?
Just to the end of the island, you'll be, I mean, you won't be able to see a car here, but you'll be able to see a car here.
With a van parked here?
Yeah, you'll be able to see to about where that arrow is, in the middle.
So your island comes around, just like this, and that's what these people are gonna do, they're gonna follow this right around. So here's your car, and you're still, you're sitting back here, you're still not seeing around this corner of the van.
Yeah, you're seeing, you can see that arrow, see the sightline you have to the arrow?
You're right, you won't be able to see the entire area, but these cars are moving, are turning, they can't be moving very fast.
Go sit at Hazardville Dunkin' Donuts, he does a phenomenal business, I'm not taking it from him, they're queued all behind the plaza, and it creates a traffic jam on Taylor Road sometimes. You sit where they come out of the drive-through, just like this, and the whole mall is trying to get out of this one intersection, and you watch those people pull out of that drive-through without, they're blowing on their hot coffee, eating their Boston Cream doughnut, not a care in the world.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not sure if anybody looked at the police comments, but one of them was putting out stop sign in, that I was talking about at the end of the drive-through, so we do, I think that that is something important.
I thought it was back here they wanted it.
They also, they said the main traffic aisle, that leads for Route 5 and twists and turns, which addresses some of the issues other people had, should be at least 24 feet at all times, is that something you can, is going to be possible? That it will be 24 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that, because, you know, obviously, that is the direction.
Do you wanna make that a condition of approval, maybe that, and it's showing that on the plans, which is already a condition, but if you have it written out as a condition, that way they can't double park in those aisles, I think that's what probably they're getting at, but what if a truck double parks there?
Yeah.
Now, now you don't have 24 feet.
Yes, well, they're trying the clean flow of traffic in and out, because we don't want anything to inhibit that ability for people to come in and out of there, which is part of why the concern is, it queuing up in different areas, which I totally understand, you know, the point of that. And unfortunately, the way this parking lot is, it's set up at twists and turns all over the place, and that, and that can be a problem, definitely, so, so yeah, that would definitely be something, plus the stop sign, so for me.
Well, you bring up a good point, too, is deliveries, where's the delivery truck parked when he unloads?
Got a loading area here, so he's gonna pull in and back up into this space.
Well, how does, where does a liquor company get their deliveries?
I don't know.
If it's the back door...
The liquor company?
The liquor, they...
Angie's?
Yeah.
I don't, they probably access from the back here.
Well, if it's the back, you're gonna block your lane.
Yeah, well, they can, they can park here and walk it down, or if they're, if they're parking here, yeah, they'll be, they'll be blocking these parking spaces, yeah. Generally, those deliveries, they try not to come during peak times, when there's a lot of activity going on, so, I don't think there's a lot, this back parking lot isn't particularly full.
But won't they be parking, the delivery truck be parked up against the building, by the door, which will be by your drive-through lane?
Well, they can, they can park here, at the, in the, if, in the loading area, in the existing conditions, if they were, if they're parking here, the spaces are down further, they'd be blocking the parking spaces the same way, so...
I'm talking about your drive-through lane, won't they be parking in the drive-through lane?
The Budweiser truck's gonna pull to the back of the building, take his hand truck out like they do at the grocery stores and little stores, they pull right up front, and they go in. They're not gonna park all the way over there, especially for something that has nothing to do with them. Angie's gonna be on the phone with the landlord in two seconds flat, saying, "This ain't working." I mean, I would have to see something, you know, some agreement with the current tenants too, because you're obstructing their exits, when they leave the building, because there's a complete back exit to that building, to the center stairwell, those people are, which you have the crosswalk, but these people, again, while they're sitting waiting for their coffee, texting on their phone, you know, you got a pedestrian crossway right across that at 7:00 in the morning?
Yeah, we have, there's doors here, and...
I see the crosswalk.
That was something the fire marshal asked for.
Which makes sense, that's how you enter and exit the building, all employees are gonna be parking back there.
But I'm saying, delivery, he's gonna get as close to the building as...
Absolutely, he is.
He's not gonna go wheeling, he's alone.
Right, well, I believe most of their deliveries come early in the morning, 3, 4 in the morning.
His deliveries aren't, they...
Right, the package door don't open till 9:00. I saw you going in the other day.
Yeah, so the deliveries, if they're here, and they're not during the peak hours, it's not gonna be anybody in the drive-through, there's gonna be one or two cars in the drive-through.
You don't know when his delivery is, you shouldn't be disrupting his business.
Well, that, that's the property owner, we're a tenant, not, we're not the owner, and that's up to the owner to coordinate with his, with his other tenants. So, owner in taking in this use is accepting that responsibility.
Where's the drive-through? Right here. I'm talking about blocking your drive-through, though, you're gonna, if a truck is parked there, your drive-through, you're gonna block all of your cars, you won't have the...
No, I think, I think a truck will park out here, not in the...
You think?
Yeah, yeah, not in the drive-through lane.
Any old truck, you know, it doesn't have to be a delivery, they're gonna figure it out, because you know, as soon as they block somebody, people will be honking their horns, people in the drive-through, somebody will be coming out of the business, saying, "Hey, you need to move your truck," you know.
Angie's back door is right there, their back door to take deliveries in, so even if he parks over here, he's gotta walk through the drive-through line, and go in the back door with this cart, with all those cars in the queue.
And I think that they'll probably be going the slowest they've ever been going.
Well, you're disrupting the whole building, I would wanna see something from other tenants, or the landlord stating that they've got a mutual agreement.
They're willing to lease it, I'm figuring that they're taking it.
Maybe Angie gets a late-time delivery, I don't know.
It's up to the property owner, who he leases it to.
Yes, you can't.
And I don't know what the plans are for the, for the future, for the other spaces.
Well, we know the one space that's there is already gonna be an issue with their deliveries, because they get deliveries every day, three, four times a day, during the day. I understand he gets them at night, or early morning, but Angie's isn't open early morning.
And, and that's not when the drive-through is busy, during the day, it's the morning.
So you'd let somebody block your driveway during the day, just because it's, you're normally not home between 9:00 and 5:00, you'd let a truck block your driveway, that's what you're saying?
Well, the, that's an issue between the tenant and the landlord, not us.
That's an issue between us too, because Angie's is gonna be in here saying, "Why would you let them block our emergency exit and our loading area? We're the ones allowing it, and the landlord's asking us to allow it, and the landlord's not here, as far as I know, correct?"
Correct.
Or the tenant, or Angie's.
I mean, they walk out their back door, and they're jumping right into possibly traffic.
All of them, any store on the back, or on the bottom floor, has exit out to the parking lot.
I don't know, it's upstairs.
Upstairs doesn't, they have to go through the elevator or the common corridor. They can't walk outside, there's no stairs outside.
But they can come down, they have a back door.
Right, they have the one main back door, but he has that address with the crosswalk, they address, but you're still crossing the drive-through lane.
That's right.
My, my biggest concern still is, you put an ADA bus in spot number one, you eliminated the sightline coming out of that drive-through, with the people going around the corner, it's gone.
I don't know, was Angie...
I don't know, how many?
Tell them there's three or four deliveries a day, I'm like, "Really?"
I don't know if Angie was aware of this, and he probably would be here.
I agree with them, that's really not in our purview, but, but the safety issue is absolutely, and those rear exits are their emergency exits.
So maybe we can, is there any way, Jen, yeah, you're hidden behind Dana, that we can just say to the landlord to please make sure that access to other businesses aren't blocked, or whatever, so...
We're approving it. We're approving it.
It doesn't make you're approving it.
The owner did supply a letter to the file saying that he, Omar Farhat, operating manager and owner of 90 Enfield Street in Enfield, Connecticut, give Dunkin' Donuts Corp. the right to apply for the changes and the additions to the building for a drive-through. And then he gave his contact information for any questions.
So can we do, maybe have a sign put up that says, "No unloading, loading and unloading"?
That's not for Angie's.
You got people on, it's an emergency exit, it's gonna step right out into traffic, except when they aren't busy.
There's a sidewalk. You step out, there's a sidewalk, you're not, you're not stepping out into traffic. You have, you have an opportunity to see if there's anyone in the drive-through. If there is, you can walk down to the crosswalk here and cross here.
They come out their back door and there's a crosswalk there.
Talking about Angie's?
Yeah, from Angie's Emergency.
No, you'd walk down the sidewalk to the center.
They'd have to take a left right down to the center and then, and then cross.
Not their back doors right up against the-
There, there were pictures that were on your desk, I think one of the pictures, the last one showed the back of the building, so if you wanna take a look at that.
Because, because I have a question, Dana. In terms of, I guess the, the top end of the stacking area, it appears that you have an easement with Eversource, but, but your driveline actually goes through the easement because you, you're, the island that you relocated hasn't been relocated far enough to, I guess, the southwest?
Yeah.
That- This, this right here?
Yeah.
This easement?
Right, well, I, I guess I'm looking, you know, I, I think that the, this is the easement line right here. This is your easement line, it's going like straight through these cars. Your easement line realistically should be going over here. There's no picture of the back of the building, so.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, there's, there's this line, but then there's this also, this, this common access agreement, which is involving 90 as well as, as well as 66, so I think that's why, that's why I put the arrow, I was trying to, I was actually trying to keep traffic from going this way, is the idea, so.
Okay, so, so they have that triangle as part of the easement from Eversource for this property?
Right.
So. All right, as long as it extends that far. Okay, thank you.
What do you, I don't have that picture, do you? Yeah. I see it. It's not on the point. Oh, yeah. But it's not on the point.
Can I say something, Charlie? Can I say something?
Sure.
What do we, what is? Yeah, what is the landlord planning on doing with the condition of the parking lot right at the main entrance?
I'm gonna be fixing it.
You're fixing it.
I think that was one of the conditions of approval, too, in the staff report.
Yeah.
Let those be repaired.
How far out of the way from the building is the traffic, the traffic read for the window, because there's a fire lane back there, too. Have you incorporated the fire lane?
Say that again?
There's a fire lane right up against the building, all the way down the back.
Up against the sidewalk.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the, the drive-through lane will be here, so this will be the fire lane, the aisle.
Gotta move the signs, right?
Did the fire marshal approve that?
Yeah, that, we had a, we had a-
Fires on the comments, so.
Okay with it.
I was wondering how he was unloading all that time, there's five deliveries a day in the fire lane, he must have parked there.
He must.
You know, if you're gonna be close to the building to unload his truck, Ford, the liquor truck, he's right up against the building.
Well, yeah, he would be.
That's what I said.
Anyone else? No, for now? Okay. Anyone in the, this is a, this is all clear. Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the audience speak in favor or against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application, anything from?
So, we put some conditions on there, just really that, from the pictures that we provided, there was, one of them was the, there was some, like, small debris items in the landscaping around the property, we just said that that should be cleaned up. And then, of course, the repair of the potholes, the catch base and the curbing around the site for compliance with the Site Maintenance Section of the Regulations should be done. Other than that, the other items that you've listed as potential conditions of approval would be addressing all the police comments, fixing the area, arrows on the site circulation, correcting the neighboring address on the, on the site plans, and putting a stop sign near the drive-through. And I don't know how you wanna address the Angie's deliveries, maybe just have their delivery area shown on the site plans, and that would take some sort of collaboration.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
And do we have to separate, do we have to separately vote on the waiver for the landscaping? Or can we, that just be included in the?
You can just sort of, if you wanted to determine that the current state of the property is, as existing is acceptable, you can sort of make that determination, so it's not really, you're not waiving anything.
John, I don't know, usually the engineering has requirements for the dumpster, now is he doing that?
So we did hold an ART on this, and I, at that time, they've addressed pretty much everything that came, came from that ART, from all of those comments, but at that point, John did, he did address that a concrete pad detail should be added to the plans for the dumpster and the, for the paving, the new paving that's going in, so. And then we did, when we did the site plan review, we did check to make sure that all ART comments were addressed.
But you have the new application for 90 Enfield Street. What number are you have the dumpster on?
It's on.
No, I'm looking for your, the conditions.
That's a different, we have it.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
It's just a dumpster detail.
That's what I have, there's a new one.
I'm talking to this, Charlie, not you.
Well.
Too many of ya.
That's what-
I think you're looking for the-
So anything that was stated back there.
I know. But we've been through a couple of court cases and these CEO and witness enforces unless it's in here.
So make it a condition.
It should be site-specific, I would guess.
Right.
Well, usually the engineering requires a screened dumpster with a certain concrete pad.
Yeah, it's, it's shown on the plan.
I, that's, I understand, but it's not in the conditions.
But it's on the plan, so it's approved with-
Because of CEO reasons.
Sometimes it's not enforced, I've been through this plenty of times.
Okay. You wanna add that as a condition?
It's an internal problem, not an extra.
Gotcha.
It depends on who's sitting upstairs. There's always this on there, that, that, yeah.
The only thing that I see as a conflict for that is, is that on his plan, he calls for a chain link enclosure, and on his detail, he calls for a solid PVC enclosure. So there is a discrepancy between the plan and the detail, so that we can sort of, you know, indicate which, which our preference would be, whether we would want the chain link or, you know, the solid PVC.
Solid, because solid keeps the debris from going through.
It might be a chain link with those plastic things.
Yeah, with privacy slats. So whichever you prefer, Carlos said he'll, if you have a preference for one or the other.
It's enclosed.
Yes, yes. I think he wanted to do the chain link with the privacy slats, but if you prefer the vinyl, he's willing to do that, too.
Slats, the slats break.
Well, the vinyl fence doesn't last, the gates and everything, I would have to agree with him.
The chain link's a little more durable.
The chain link with the slats is much more durable.
The slats really make it look very nice.
But how about the base, it's a-
Oh, concrete slab.
Yeah, but he has certain depths or whatever, a certain requirement.
Under the ART, John Kabibow had asked that it be, I think, eight inches in depth for the concrete pad for the dumpster, and that, we did check to see, and it, the detail does reflect that.
All right.
Quick thing, there was no comments from the Health District.
They were at the ART as well.
They were.
Yeah, one of their comments was, their only comment was regarding grease removal, whether or not there was gonna be any storage in the dumpster area, and if so, they wanted the dumpster area enlarged to make room for that. And Carlos tells me that they don't plan to have any grease storage at the, at the dumpster. They have a company that comes in and cleans out their internal grease, grease trap and just removes it from the site, so there's never any storage.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't think they cook the donuts on-site anymore.
You don't cook them, cook donuts on-site? No.
No, so what, what grease would you have?
Just the free-baste thing.
Yeah.
Minimal.
Are you all set? Okay, I got it, I'll open it once more, unless we're done. Anyone in the audience who wanna, wanna speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor against this application? Last call to speak in favor against the application. Jen, you all set?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll, I'll close public hearing 2940, I got that one right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve public hearing 2940, 90 Enfield Street, dated, as prepared by the Planning Department, dated, with today's date, the 23rd of May, with the conditions listed, with the, I guess, 28 conditions listed, with some additional site-specific conditions to include the following. The chain link fence around the dumpsters is to be, have-
Privacy slats.
The privacy screens. There's gonna be an indication for the deliveries, a delivery parking location for other tenants that are in, on a property. A, a stop sign is gonna be added at the end of the, the exit area from the drive-through. The, the police comments are gonna be included in the revised-
Final plans.
Drawings. The arrows that are shown on the, the arrows that are confusing as to being in a wrong direction are gonna be resolved and changed. And then the address of the adjacent property is 88 Enfield Street instead of 78 Enfield Street. Did I miss any?
No, I don't, I guess we don't need, because you said according to the engineer's office, so we don't need the concrete pad depth. Any questions from the commission, any discussion? Motion's been made, did I have a second? Kenny did, okay.
I'm gonna have to vote against this, only due to the fact that the drive-through traffic is exiting blindly into the incoming traffic to get to the drive-through. With a van in that handicap spot, you have zero sight line. He's even agreed, they're gonna have to inch out slowly. People don't do that at seven o'clock in the morning on their way to work. And it, it's just a very, very bad safety issue right there that needs to be addressed. That is my only concern with this whole thing. If they could eliminate that parking spot where nobody parks there, because even if you make it a regular spot, you still could have a, a van parked there. But if no spot is there, at least it would increase the sight line for the traffic.
Well, they have, they have the number of parking spots, why can't they?
It's an ADA spot, they would just have to move it.
Well, that's right. They could move it down.
They can go ahead and make a condition.
Well, I, I wanna, I mean, it's their plan, I don't wanna, but that, that would be my only reason to vote against it, and.
Well, so we're having the discussion, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah.
I have to agree with Kenny, only after my experience on the site last night at five o'clock with minimal traffic, what I saw, and the maneuverability to go in and around cars that are queued up at the light, that, that was my concern when I pulled in last night. I didn't think about it until I actually experienced it, so. And I agree with that handicap spot definitely would block view if somebody had a van there. Even if they, you put it as a regular spot, somebody pulls in with a, a work truck.
We could eliminate one space in the front and, and just leave that, either expand the island, or, or-
How wide is that space? Fifteen feet?
Well, a handicap space fifteen, but, but we would eliminate one of the regulars, because we can't eliminate the handicap space.
Right, but you could move it down.
Right, we could move it down, we could eliminate a regular, so you gain nine feet if you lost one space.
That would be a compromise I would accept.
Yeah.
Anything's better than the way it is right now.
Well, what would have to be then, we'd have to-
Just increase the size of that median.
No, but we'd have to withdraw the, the second and the motion, and then they'd have to agree to it and that, and-
You can amend the motion.
We just have to reopen.
Well, we can amend the motion to include as a, as a, you know, site-specific condition that, you know, one parking spot be eliminated in front of the building.
The handicap be eliminated.
No, 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 handicap, the handicap is just gonna be moved over.
Richard's got it right.
Where the handicap will be moved over, so that the sight line would be increased for the people exiting from the, the drive-through area.
And that peninsula, that, right, that peninsula is to be expanded nine feet.
Correct.
So that way, nobody can park there.
And, and looking at the parking calculations, they, they have provided 48, and all they require is 38, so that, you know, they have the, the ability to remove a space or two.
Okay, so we still have to withdraw the second and the motion, because you're going to add that to your conditions.
Okay. Or, or could I just modify?
If you just say, if you wanna say amend, and then someone has to second it.
Oh, amend, okay, amend the motion.
He amended it.
You accept the amendment?
Yes, I accept the amendment.
You, you have no problem with it either, okay.
Okay, so it's amended now.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I can make it official, I amend my motion to include the elimination of that parking spot in the front. Parking number one gets moved over towards the northeast.
And becomes an island.
Correct.
It becomes an island, you don't want anybody in there.
Correct, correct.
Now, any, that's, the motion has been amended, is there any addition? Any, any questions, any problems?
I, could I ask a question? There was, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's our discussion.
Can, can I talk to Jen about it?
I, maybe later, I don't know. You can talk to her all you want. Okay, people. You don't? Do you need a waiver? What are they?
Jen said that we're supposed to rate it in the-
Yeah, that's what I thought she said.
Right.
So we don't have to do a specific?
No.
Well, we'd have to amend our motion, because I don't see it as a site-specific condition, that landscaping, the, yeah.
It's on the thing that we, that was left at our desk tonight, one of the conditions.
Did, did you know which one it is?
Lori's letter, no, Lori's letter.
No. Well, the, the conditions that we have do not address that.
No, we don't have to address it per the Assistant Town Planner.
Right, but, but, the draft resolution that we have does not address allowing an variance for landscaping, is what I'm saying.
Waiver.
A waiver, I mean.
Okay, I have to go back, give me a minute.
All right, I, I don't see it here.
All right, if it's not there, it's gotta get in there.
Well, the regulations provide that you can sort of just determine in your review that the landscaping, that as it exists, since you're not really expanding the facility, is- that the landscaping, as it exists, since you're not really expanding the facility, is acceptable. So it's not necessarily something that needs to be part of the motion, as it's not really a waiver. It's something that you just sort of determined, and, I mean--
Where are we with that?
So basically, I'm comfortable with the waiver.
If you want to make sure, then we can do the waiver after this.
Well, it's all concrete and pavement.
The main, main move. Well, that's what I mean, if you need a--
I mean, the only landscaping on the entire property is the little strip up by Route Five.
Yeah, right.
And if you look at his facilities, he's going to make that plaza 100 times nicer than what it is right now.
I know, I know. But somebody, they're talking waivers.
Yes, I'm just saying, I'm comfortable.
Technically speaking, you can't really waive the zoning regulations, but what, basically, because the regulations provide that you can say that the landscaping on the property is acceptable as is, since he's not really expanding anything, by simply approving this, you're really just saying that it meets the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Be approved, as the frontage does not have adequate space for plantings.
Right, so by, basically--
That's why I asked you, and you said it was okay.
Yeah, in approving the application, it would be like saying it meets the regulations, and that's why it would meet that specific regulation.
Yep, so we don't need to do a separate vote.
Yeah, we're comfortable with that, too. You do whatever you feel is best, but we're comfortable without a formal waiver.
Okay, so now where are we?
Right.
Okay, I know, but are you all set with this?
Yes, I just want to make sure we covered our bases.
Okay. All in favor is amended? Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Finally.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good catch. Well, it's existing that way, and I don't know how you're going to make a change.
I don't want to muddy the waters.
Okay. Public hearing 2941. Secretary, please take the roll and read the legal notice for 2941. 359 Hazard Avenue, Special Use Permit Application.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 23, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application: Public Hearing 2941, 359 Hazard Ave., Special Use Permit Application for a medical office to be located on the first floor of the building within the limited office overlay zone, 359 Hazard Avenue LLC, Constantinosso, Constant-- I'm getting--
I'll help you.
Owner, applicant, map 92 lot 1, Hazerville Zone 33, Limited Office Overlay Zone, Hazerville Design District Overlay Zone. Charles Duran.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Hagley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Altona DeGray will be sitting in for missing commissioner. Gentlemen, if you will, introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bonanno, B-O-N-A-N-N-O. I'm an attorney at Tavano McEwen Bonanno &amp; Collins, and that's in Glastonbury, Connecticut. With me today is Arthur Hall. He's our architect. And I also have the owner, Dr. Constantinos. It's Dr. Constantinos, Constantino, just for the record. As a matter of housekeeping, if I may, I have the sign applica, or the affidavit for posting, a public sign, if I may submit that. Another minor matter of housekeeping, we did submit some revised plans today. I think you have them in your packets, and we would just like to respectfully request that they be made part of the application and the hearing tonight. There was just some minor revisions with regard, in response to some of the staff comments. We added some little details that Art can go into in greater detail later. As you know, with the packet, you've got a narrative from us, and I'll save you the burden of having to hear the entire, have me repeat it verbatim. I do want to provide some additional context, though, if I may, and then, of course, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Dr. Constantino purchased the property at the end of 2018. It's located in the Hazardville section of town. If you're familiar with it, it's a very attractive, aesthetically attractive building that was built in 1864. It was used as the Hazardville Grammar School for just over 100 years, I believe. Its most recent use was that it was occupied by a daycare center, but it had been vacant for, I believe, it was a couple of years, I'm not sure. Dr. Constantino did purchase the property from a bank that had done a foreclosure, so it had been vacant until that point. It's a very attractive building that Dr. Constantino saw the potential to renovate it, to reuse the property, so that it would continue to be a functioning asset of the community. It's located, as I said, within that Hazardville Design District, and therefore, by reference in the limited office overlay zone, where a medical office, which is what we're proposing, is permitted by special permit. Thankfully, your zoning regulations do recognize the fact that the use of the property may change over time, but that doesn't mean that the bones or the physical structure of the building can't continue to serve as a reminder of the town's culture and interesting past. So our proposed renovation is to convert just a portion of the lower floor of the building. It's on the southwest portion of the existing building, and Art can point that out to you in a moment. It's been, like I said, vacant and underutilized. Other than some minor improvements to the exterior, there's some issues we have to address with regard to the facade, but there's really going to be just minor improvements to the exterior, such as restriping the parking lot and installing some traffic signs per staff comments and regulations. But the majority of the renovations are going to be limited to the building's interior. So the application that we have proposes kind of a use-what-we-have approach, where it's consistent with the mantra of the reuse, reduce, and recycle mantra that we hear, and I agree with. There's no demolition required. We're using the existing building, of course, and the energy that would be normally associated with the manufacturing of materials for constructing a new building is going to be avoided, or at a minimum, or at least minimized. So this adaptive reuse of an antiquated building that holds a lot of value for the town is going to provide a medical office, which is a real service that I think meets the town's needs. It's accessible by pedestrians, and it maintains the character and charm of the neighborhood. Let's face it, you might go your entire life without needing legal help or avoiding having to hire an attorney, but we're all going to need medical services, and I think that it's a valuable asset and service that the community could use. As I said, it's going to be accessible by pedestrians. There's a sidewalk right in front. It's consistent with the intent of the Hazardville Overlay District, also the Limited Office District, and as well as the Plan of Conservation and Development. In fact, it was actually specifically designated and listed as a notable resource. So we're going to preserve the historical architectural qualities that are consistent with that period. We obviously recognize we have to comply with the other specific regulations of the various sections, and if you have some questions about that, our architect can certainly fill in some of those gaps.
I have questions. All right. I was over there last night.
Major way around, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I do get around. There was a couple of things. That northeast corner, the bricks are falling off of the facade.
That's right.
That was a big concern, right there. It was like a big red flag. But I'm sure you're going to do something, cordon it off or whatever, so people won't park over there.
That's right. That is going to be addressed. I talked to my client. He can certainly fill, you know, supplement my response, but because it's a historical structure, he is working with the State Historical Society to address that.
Now, my next question is, how are you going to get handicapped people in wheelchairs into this facility? Because when you go into the front entrance, there are stairs that go up to that first floor, and if you go to the side entrance, the exact same thing. And having had to push people in wheelchairs for a very long period of time in my life, it's difficult. And so how are you going to, that, I don't see how that's being addressed, and I'm sure the architect will take us through that.
Yeah, I haven't actually shown it on the plan yet, but I think probably we wind up having to put a little lift in that front stairway to get up those four risers in the front. I would have loved to have done a ramp up there, but there's not enough space for it, so I think I'm probably going to have to do a lift.
Okay, and another question is, are they going to be, going to go through the front door or the side door to enter into this office building?
They would go through the front door, I would expect.
The front door. Okay, that was my concern, is to have to go all the way around to the side, and, okay.
Yeah, we're only using a very limited portion of the building.
Yeah, I see that.
Which really is just the later addition, the front portion, which is a later addition. Yeah, and the back part wouldn't even be open for the--
Yeah, yeah.
The mic is none, or?
Well, move that one over here.
We're only using the front portion of the building. You know, initially, the public wouldn't be allowed, you know, into the back portion, you know, which wouldn't have been renovated by that point.
Well, I'm glad somebody's going to use the building, but those were the two big concerns I had when I went over there last night.
I have a quick question. In terms of, you indicate that you're going to put a lift in there. In terms of, you know, I'm just looking at your plan. Is there enough room for the lift and for somebody to use the stairs in that stairwell, or how is that going to fit with, you know, because normally a lift has to fit a wheelchair, so it's going to be four feet wide. Your steer width that you have there right now is probably, I don't know what it scales, but it doesn't look like it scales more than, you know, six feet wide. So you can't put a lift in there and have an active steer.
A wheelchair is 30 inches wide. A lift, you know, then I was thinking of an inclined lift that would be just on one side of this stair, and there should be adequate space left on the side, you know.
But in terms of, if this whole building is being utilized, and there's 150 people in there, that you have certain, you know, width exit requirements, so you need a certain width of exit in order to be maintained, you know, all the people getting out. And eventually, I guess what we're looking at is that the building will be totally utilized, so that, you know, again, you know, I think that you need to address it or show us a plan as to how it fits in there, you know.
Yeah, that, all of that will be dealt with in the building plans.
Okay, so you're not planning on doing any ramps on the outside, because if there's something on the outside, we get involved.
Right.
So what you're saying is that if you do need a ramp, you're going to do it internally, or else you will definitely put in an elevator or a lift, or something else that would be utilized. My next comment is that you indicate that the people won't be allowed to use the back of the building, but I'm just looking at your plans, and there's only one toilet room that's shown, and, oh, there's a big one over there. All right, so, but, so is there a differentiation between, you know, what's available? Because I'm looking at the proposed medical office. I know when I go to the doctors, and he wants me to give him a urine sample, and you have to go, you know, into a bathroom or something so that you can wash your hands and do everything like that after you're done with one of those samples. So, but, so, and, but I don't see that you have any, in your, you know, in your--
That's more detailed.
I know, yeah, I know. But what I'm saying is that, you know, did it have to go into, you know, a toilet area that's out in a hallway? Do you do that?
The layout is only a preliminary, you know, concept of how it might look. The bathrooms would have to be redone to provide, you know, the necessary, you know, number of toilets. All of that is controlled by the building code, and, you know, we will totally comply with what the requirements of the building code are when we actually develop the final plan inside. This is really only a preliminary plan.
He might not be that kind of doctor, that he needs samples.
Yeah, we recognize that there will be some challenges as we go on with the remediation on the interior, and we take staff comments to heart. I know the building department gave a lot of heads-up comments, which were useful, and, of course, they do have to comply with all ADA codes and regulations, as well as building code and state code regulations. But, and certainly, we will, otherwise, they won't get the approvals that we're looking for, the certificates of occupancy.
I have to say that I'm very happy that the building is going to be used. I've watched it for years, and I'm glad that somebody's going to save it, and I appreciate that he's going to do that. I'm also appreciative of the fact that before anyone else goes in there each time, they have to come back to us. That would be very helpful. I'm sure the doctor will want good tenants, and I'm sure he will pick and choose at will, but I'm very happy that they'll come back to us first.
Thank you.
So, thank you for considering the building.
Thank you.
I was going to say, the last time I was in that building, the town was using it for storage of voting machines in the back, the back section.
When was that, if I may?
Quite a while ago.
Couple months ago, yeah.
Anybody else on the commission? Okay, I'll open it to the audience.
Does he anticipate what he's going to want to use his back classrooms for in the future?
I think at this point, no, I don't think he's got an idea. You know, he just purchased the property under six months ago. This is something that, you know, stuck out to him as a way that he can utilize the property right away, and the rest of it is kind of a puzzle that we're trying to put together, and I think Art's got the heavy lifting on that. But, no, there's a lot of possibilities. It's a beautiful building that can accommodate a lot of different uses, similar ones, associated ones, but at this point, his focus is simply on the single medical office.
If his practice is successful, he may want more doctors back there.
That's a good point. Right. Correct.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against this application? Yes, please come forward. Name and address, please. I think I, oh. Yeah, you'll have to vacate and let her sit down.
Good evening. Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, Four Summers Road. So my husband and I own some properties in the neighborhood, right up the street, and so I think we're also happy to see something happen with the building. But as I think everybody's aware, it is a National Registered Historic District, a very important contributing resource. So we would want to, and I'm sure the whole community would want to, make sure that the facade is addressed. It needs a new roof. The bricks need repointing. They're falling off. They're falling off because the roof is deteriorating. There are windows in the attic area that are falling apart, so I think they mentioned that they were working with the State Historic Shipo, I imagine. So I think that it's important that the facade be maintained and restored to its original condition. So they didn't really answer a question that somebody asked, was my question, was what is the, what's the big plan for the building? I find it kind of hard to believe that you would purchase a building as large as that and not have some sort of idea as to what you're going to do with it, because there, we can't really see the plans back there, but it looks like they're only using a fraction of the building. only using a, a fraction of, of the building. So, and as far as the parking area goes, I think it needs more than striping. It's in pretty poor condition. And I'd like to know what the hours are going to be, and how many, how many vehicles will probably be going in and out of there? And is the area on the west side of the building, which I think was a playground area when it was, when it was the school and the daycare, what's going to happen with that? And... Are there any hazardous materials concerns with, with renovation of the building? So those are just some questions that come to mind. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor or against this application? Yes, please go forward again. Name and address.
Hi, Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple Street. I too am happy to see somebody, you know, renovate this building and try to save the historic quality of the, of the area. I went to fifth grade grammar school there, and so that's how old it goes back for me. Long time ago.
Well, Charlie says he was, he could point out his classroom.
The one thing that I didn't hear addressed was landscaping. I don't know what's required there, but Gretchen touched on the, the west side or the left side of the building that used to be all paved and playground area. I don't know if any of that can be returned to some kind of landscaped, you know, area or whatever. But there's, it's all paving. So if anything can be returned, I don't know what the requirements are in the Hazville Village area for, you know, that type of thing. But it'd be nice if we could see some, some things done down there. But that facade, hopefully nothing will change there because it's got beautiful detail in the bricks and, um, everything else. So, thank you.
Anyone else to address the commission or against the application? Okay. It's all right.
Just, just one more point. I mean, I know that it was a daycare, and so there was traffic going in and out. But it just, and nobody's raised the fact that there is a playground right across the street. And so, and the only access to get into that parking area on the east side of the building is off of School Street. So it would be nice if you asked some questions about the traffic and egress and how many vehicles are going in and out.
Anyone else? Applicant, want to address any of the questions?
Thank you very much. Mike Banano, again for the record, and thanks for the comments. I think for a couple points, Dr. Constantino does intend to restore the building to its original condition to the best of his ability. This is going to be a Class A office building or medical office. And I'm sure the tenant, whoever that's going to be, is going to, is going to require that it, it appears in, in pristine condition, the best that he can make it, including the parking lot. If there's any defects in the parking lot that are unsafe or unsightly, he's going to make those repairs. The hours, I believe, were limited to what the regulations state. I believe it's eight to eight. I, I can't imagine the, you know, medical office would be open that full span, but I know that the regulations do address that. With regard to the playground and, I'm not sure exactly, I don't know, Art, if you have any other, you know, information about what, how we can handle that. I know that we're going to try to clean it up as best as possible and, and make it look, you know, to present as best as possible, too. With regard to the traffic, obviously, Art, I think it's, I believe it's supported that daycare, there's going to be more traffic. I mean, there's pickups and drop-offs two, three times a day, whereas a, a single medical office, I believe it's, you know, you're not going to be able to, to entertain as much traffic. And, and the, we are stuck with the, the egress coming out on School Street, the way that it is. But of course, the playground that exists is across that street there, so we don't believe there will be that much interaction. And I think the traffic will be relatively limited.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Several, the, the people who talked were discussing preserving the building. I just want to make sure I understood the premise, that you're going to continue to keep the front facade as it is. I mean, you're going to clean it up and repoint it, put the bricks back, but you're not going to move a doorway or change the windows or anything like that.
That's correct. There is no, no proposal at, at this time for that or desire.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I saw a hand up in the audience, if you wish to come forward, it will go, do, do so now. You, you had your hand up?
Karen.
I don't know, Karen, it was the person next to you I saw the hand, but that's all right.
Karen LaPlant, 166. Just a quick question on parking lot lighting, because I don't think there's any parking lot lights at this time. And if it was going to be parking lot lights, you know, kinds and all that kind of stuff.
Not on the plan.
All right, come on.
Lloyd Hall, Four Summers Road, and...
Excuse me, sir.
The microphone. Sorry. Here, pick it over here.
You can move the mic, but you can...
Hi, this is Lloyd Hall from Four Summers Road. There's an echo. So, I just want to make it, make sure, I'm also appreciative that, because we've got the house, we're trying to restore just up the street, which was, you know, vacant for like 10 years and had all kinds of problems. And I'm sure some of you are aware of that. And it's a long-term process to restore anything, we found out. But here's, the question also is, and we talk about the thing across the street. Well, since I'm in a very visual spot when I'm working there every day, I look at the whole street going down to the park, and there's people that always show up with their cars, even on the side streets there, where they're playing hoop on the basketball court that's out there in the playground. So there is also traffic that goes there. Sometimes trucks will even park on that side going right down to the street. So there is a little bit of traffic that is there, and there are people that are egressing over to the park and then back to the park, and it's, and there's a lot of people that walk around the whole block, and they love the area and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, we've just got to be conscious of all that. Okay? Thank you.
Gentlemen, you wish to come forward again, or?
Just briefly, I think certainly we'll comply. We're going to be installing some traffic signs, some, some stop signs, two stop signs at the property, and, and restryping everything. And, you know, to the, to the extent that we can control any of those traffic or safety concerns, we certainly will, and that's our intent. But I don't know how we could control, you know, people walking around the neighborhood, et cetera. But certainly we'll comply with all of the regulations, yes.
And, and the lighting that she asked about? Are you going to have lighting on the side of the building where the parking lot is?
You know, I'm not sure, actually, at this point in time, how we're going to address that. I suppose it depends a little bit on the tenant, perhaps the hours that they're going to be, that they're going to be working. But for safety and security purposes, I would expect that, that would probably, you know, be something that he's going to want to, to install. But in all honesty, I don't have that, those details at this point.
Yes.
A couple of questions. These plans are kind of very vague. Along the front of the property, along Hazard Avenue, are there any street trees?
On the property, along Hazard Avenue, are there any street trees currently existing? Yeah, I think, I believe there are a couple small saplings, if I recall, when I was out there. You know, I, I, yeah, I've only been out there a couple times. I don't recall if...
Jen, can you check and see if this meets? Because, I mean, they spent a lot of money on Hazardville Center with the brick pavers and the streetlights and stuff like that. I understand the cost of renovating the building. It can't be done overnight. Look at the Hazardville Institute, and that's with public funds. Spent millions in how many years with no current use of the building? He's trying to make a use of the building. I understand Rome wasn't built overnight. It's going to take him time to get it back up because many people, including the town, neglected it for so many years.
Absolutely.
It takes time. I commend him for taking on a big project. I understand you start with baby steps, and that's what he's doing. And I just, I also will say, the facade of the building is very important, that it stays the same and is corrected sooner than later, before it gets too far out of hand. And the only requirement that I would ask for at this time would be that streetscape is within the normal of the Hazardville District. And if any trees have died or anything has changed, that they be planted back.
There were trees on the tree belt last time I looked, but that doesn't mean they're here now.
Yeah, well, I understand, Charlie, but the problem is, there's nothing on our plan showing. And I want to, so just as a condition...
The town takes them down usually without...
Right. They make them put them up, and the town takes them down. But still, I want to, you know, Hazardville's beautiful with the, you know, paper walks and everything.
Oh, yeah. It was until they did the cement.
Right. I'm not willing to push the building egress. The building's been there since 1850. Cars have been coming in and out of there.
I have no idea.
Nothing's going to change, so...
It's the original back building, or, because that was built twice.
The rear, the rear portion seems to be a lot older than the front portion.
It is. Yeah, that was built, that, that back is the original school, and then they added the front. I don't know what year.
So I would just...
I wasn't there, no.
I would just ask that a... And I didn't go to that school either.
But I've been, as I said, I've been in there for the voting, voting machines.
There are, I pulled it up on Google Maps, the street view. It appears that there are two trees in the front of that building, along with a couple light posts. I measured on the Enfield GIS what the frontage is. It's approximately 200 feet. And I think the, the regulations require one tree per each 50 feet. So if you, you can, again, it's similar to the last application. If you can decide that what is existing on a property that's not really being changed is okay, or you can require that they, under the public hearing, you can require that they comply. So that's your determination.
Well, I would just ask that the streetscape be brought up. You know, plant, if there's two trees missing, plant the two trees. My mic's on. Other than that, I'm good with it. I thank him for taking a chance with Enfield.
Oh, absolutely. When I saw it come in, I said, oh, boy, that's great, because it's been sitting there.
It's a good use for the building.
The town, the town had it for a while.
Yep.
And, and sold it. Okay. Again, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against? Anyone in the audience, favor or against? Last call for this evening, favor or against? Gentlemen, are you all set?
I think so. Thank you. Yes.
Is the commission all set for now? Okay. Now, what do you want to do? Do you wish to close it, or is there a reason for you to continue it? Or what is your desire you want? Jen?
Just looking at the memo that Lori sent out, the conditions, we put the 27 standard conditions on there. You'll notice that site-specific condition number nine, we didn't change that. It says just will be added for each unique application. So you can eliminate that, or you can just change it to a condition if you have one that you want to make...
Well, if you want, you want to add that on your trees, is what she's saying, I think.
Well, I think what we, what we should add is, is that the comments made by the different, you know, commissions be included as a site-specific condition in terms of, I think the police have some, you know, there's no fire lanes noted on the plans, the handicapped sign is, you know, what, what happens with, with the, I guess, the Westleymost driveway, stop shot, signs and, you know, that, that the, I guess, the, that Health Department has some comments, too. So I think that, you know, as, as a stipulation, we should just include all the, the requirements that the, the different departments have in town. And then the fact that they, they meet the, the landscaping requirements or upgrade the landscaping requirements. You know, obviously, you know, I, I support this reuse definitely. And, and I, you know, I just have some concerns, being in a construction business where older buildings are, are really difficult to upgrade and that, you know, they, they need to be upgraded to, to today's standards. And, you know, and I think that, you know, the, the, the building department and everybody else is going to make sure that, you know, it complies and is safe for everybody who's utilizing the building, so.
Right.
In that sense, I feel comfortable that those standard conditions, plus what we just indicated, should be fine.
I took number nine to mean that this would be for future applications. If they had site-specific conditions, it would apply to future applications, where they came in with the, when you decided who, what he was going to do with the rest of the building.
Well, number nine, so we have a template for the conditions that we put on, so we have all of the regular standard ones that go for all of the special permits. And that's just a placeholder that Raquel and I use, just so that we know, so that we have a section of those conditions where we can put the site-specific ones.
As they make changes, they've got to come in. But Kenny, Ken's suggesting that you add the trees. He wanted the two trees on the streetscape planted. So...
Well, I want the front to meet the Hazardville...
I agree with Ken. It's very important to keep the overlay district right.
Well, you want the trees now or when, later?
Well, now.
Well, all right.
They're along the right of way.
So a site-specific condition would be, number nine, right now, is that presently you want two trees added?
Two street trees, yeah.
Overlay district?
You're right.
All right, so I will close. Yeah, but who's the question, too? All right. Jen, another question for you.
Do these gentlemen, do these gentlemen have these statements by the...
I'm not sure. Did, did you receive the email? Okay.
Yes, thank you. And in fact, we updated the plan to reflect the, some of the comments of the strike.
Okay. I didn't want to require you to do them without you having them seen.
Okay, so, we said on, you ready for me to close?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll close public hearing 2941.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve public hearing 941, 359 Hazard Avenue, in accordance with the, I guess, draft, draft resolution dated May 14th, as prepared by the, the planning department with the standard 27 conditions. And then we're going to add some additional conditions to include that the remarks of the various departments of the town be a part of this, you know, approved application, that they include, you know, their comments as part of their future development and, you know, when they come back to further review. And the fact that the landscaping requirements meet, you know, section 8.7, which is the Hazardville Design District, so that, you know, and our standard regulations also, so that if, if, you know, if the Hazardville Design District requires additional landscaping beyond what is normally required, that it also be included in, in the, the design.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Motion's made and seconded. Now, you put in his trees, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, go ahead.
I'm just glad to see somebody purchasing the building, too. It's a beautiful building, and it's really neat, and I'm, and I'm very excited, and I do... I do understand the whole piece of, it's going to take time to be able to renovate it, but it's nice to have somebody who wants to invest in our community, and that's a building that is just, I can't tell you how many people talk about that building, so, so I'm excited for that, and thanks.
I believe, I have a postcard from way back that just shows the original building as it was, before they put the one up.
I too appreciate you doing it. I lived on that street for 40 years. No longer do, but always glad to see it getting upgraded, and especially that part of town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Okay, motion's made, is all in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous, and good luck in your project, and hopefully we'll see you again soon. All righty. 359, site plan reviews. Other business? No, any correspondence? It was good to see we're getting the magazine again, or the newsletter. There's always a lot of good information in there, especially court cases, because a lot of them sometimes, in fact, we've ended up in a couple of them. And that, that's the one that we have not had for a while, so we must have paid our dues, is that right?
She's over there nodding.
I know. Okay, so we get the quarterly newsletter now. Any, anything else? Jen, I noticed, and they aren't allowed, there's a clothing box down from, from the firehouse or Brainerd Road, down on the right-hand side. I think it's at the store. It's a little white one out there, and you miss it if you're driving by. So he, the zoning enforcement officer should pay him a visit. Anything other, any other chairman?
Charlie about requiring us to provide...
What?
There's an article in this Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies about state legislators, legislators look to amend a section 8.2. They want to change it from, this housekeeping measure should be, to require municipal zoning regulations to do more than encourage a variety of housing opportunities, including affordable housing, and instead require that they amended zoning regulations to provide for those, or risk losing discretionary funding from the state.
Well, we've, we've always met the requirement so far.
We got a new mandate here.
We've always met it. And in fact, I think by some of the changes we've made recently, whether knowingly or unknowingly, we've, we've done so. Yeah. Okay, gentlemen, applications to, yeah, authorization for anything, well, Jen has a report, the other reports?
I did have a few things that I wanted to bring up. Just a couple of small things you should have received in your emails, the, from Raquel, anyone who needs to be reappointed, whose seats are expired. I just want to make sure everyone did see that email, and just be cognizant of that. All of your reappointment applications have to go, I believe, to the town manager's office, so anyone who needs to do that, I would do that sooner rather than later. You also received in your email an update on the Nutmeg Solar. They, I believe they passed through the citing council, so now they're moving on with their development plan, so that's moving forward. And then the other item, at the last, or the meeting before, we discussed the, amending the outdoor dining regulations, to give you a little more leeway when approving audio systems. Along those same, when we sent that off to CROG, along those same lines, there's a portion of that same regulation that governs how big outdoor dining areas can be, and it says that the outdoor dining area cannot exceed 50% of the floor area of the indoor dining area. And I guess there's a certain proposed restaurant in town that would like to have an outdoor dining area that is slightly bigger. I don't know if that's something that you would be open to seeing a text amendment to as well, that, we don't have any proposed language at this time, but it was just sort of a request that came through the office.
I was going to say, if you're going to a restaurant, you're going to a restaurant to eat, or you're going to a pub-type thing to, to your friends and libations, but patios are nice, but they're also seasonal, and there was a lot of thought that went into the present size of the patios that are on the books, and I, for one, would not want to see it enlarged. I think that it's just, again, maybe someplace it would work well, but for the most part, most of our neighborhoods are kind of mixed, and you're going to have houses, and you're going to have businesses, and it's just, in my opinion, only my opinion, I'm happy with the way it's working now.
I think they should be happy with what they got.
Well, I think, one of my concerns would be when you're going, you're making your outside space bigger than your indoor.
Yes.
You're really limiting yourself, because you only have a possible two seasons, you know, time period to be able to utilize that, unless it's like going to be somehow enclosed in a certain way, or heated, or whatever. So I think, to me, that's just, I'm not really sure.
Well, it sounds like they want to use a stage more than they want to use... Well, yeah, that's what you allowed last time, is music. They're not just going to put the band on the ground.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I believe the people...
So that's what they're going to do, is have more people, so that they have more concerts, let's say. But, well, why else would they go the other way?
I don't, I guess I don't understand. I don't understand what you mean.
So I guess what this is coming from is that the potential user of this site is looking to put a patio, an outdoor dining patio that has, there's also a part of that section that says that the number of tables and seats within the outdoor dining patio can't exceed 50% of the number of seats indoor. They're not asking about that, so there's a commercial recreation, entertainment-type component there that they would be looking to, to add to the outdoor. So they're not looking to necessarily have most of their seating outdoor, but they are looking for more space to do other things.
Without knowing what it is.
And what it is.
I can't say.
Right.
Where it is.
Right.
Once you open the door, I'm sorry, once you open the door, you can't close it. In other words, the people that we held to a specific standard are going to come back, and even if it's site-specific, they're going to say, well, we've been doing this for years, we should get the consideration.
Yeah, but... Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. There's differences between the areas that you're doing it in, and what you're approving, that are site-specific.
We're being asked to, oh, yeah, add this blindly, and that's when we get into trouble.
Yes, and I can't do that blindly.
That's why we asked last time, and we put conditions in there, but apparently they didn't like the conditions, because they want to have more room for more people, naturally.
Well, are we talking like a special permit? I mean, what do we?
Well, all outdoor dining patios require a special permit.
So right there, that helps with regards to whether it fits in with the neighborhood, the health, the self, safety, the welfare.
That's right.
So, I mean, I think that's an important piece right there. I just don't know if, personally, more than 50%, that's really pushing it in my mind.
Absolutely.
There's nothing that prohibits them from trying to expand it with a, with a special use permit, to go before us, and then we just prove it, then they can ask for it.
Or as an event, yeah.
Don't forget, the reason why these outdoor patios really came about was because of the smoking ban in restaurants and bars, so everybody started putting in small patios out there, and it just kind of grew and expanded to something different, where, you know, you got a big one out there at, say, Stella's, which has got, you know, a nice one out front on Hazard Avenue, but that's pretty elaborate, but it all started with the smoking ban. You know, customers wanted to, you know, a lot of them still smoke, so.
I think they got, they actually got something that they'd requested anyhow, but now they want a little bigger bite. Jen, I guess you have the information? Anything else?
Not for me, unless you guys have anything, any questions.
Of course, they haven't come in at all, and they aren't willing yet to put their name out, so. Okay. Authorization for administrative approvals, anything?
Yep, there's just that one item listed, the bagel shop located at 604 Enfield Street, the same plaza where the tipsy paintbrush and the axe-throwing are going.
Mary and I have to eat, so.
Are they only doing bagels? I mean, is it a bakery, or what, what exactly?
They, they used, that's where the Chinese restaurant used to be, right?
I have no idea.
I don't know exactly, that's what I wanted to ask her, or is it going into where the pizza place used to be?
I don't think that's big enough.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know, that's why I asked.
I just assumed it was the restaurant.
A deli-type place, or is it just? If it's a deli, that's sort of different.
I guess.
So you want them to come in, or what do you think?
Well, it's administrative approval.
Well, you know, but you can tell them to come in instead.
They don't need to, if it's, just find out what they're doing.
Well, no, she can let Charlie know what they're doing, and then, and then if you have concerns, you can decide.
We're just wondering what space that they're going into. There've been two restaurants already in that plaza, so.
Well, is it a restaurant?
But normally...
And we don't know if it's a restaurant or just a bagel shop where you just go in and get a bagel.
Yeah, bakery, just pick up bagels.
But does it really matter whether they're a restaurant or a bagel shop in terms of, if it's, if it's a retail area and they're just providing a service as either a retailer or business, it really shouldn't matter, so...
Oh, but they'll need the...
After the axe-throwing.
All right, so, they said...
And a snake house.
It's a bagel restaurant, serving coffee, breakfast, and lunch from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so I would imagine there's a kitchen.
Fine.
That's different, yeah. And where are they going, in the old friendlies? Because that's all set up, I would guess, unless they tore everything out.
I know, I'm not sure where that one is, but I'm looking in here, they didn't demark out which, which exact unit it's in. I'm pretty sure, from discussions with our staff, that I thought it was the Chinese place before.
It was the what?
Oh, Chinese place.
That'll be a good use, that's the one closest to Enfield Street, and it used to be Chinese.
I thought, I thought that was...
Oh, friendlies, okay, it was a Chinese in between, I figured that one.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make a motion that we approve authorization for administrative approval of site plan review 1779 604 Enfield Street for Benson's Bagels.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great, okay. And any applications to be received?
We did receive an application for the shops at Elm Street Square, across from Paloma Drive, so that'll be coming to you. We've received a lot of applications in the office, and staff obviously was out last week. We were at the second portion of our CASIO training, so we're playing catch-up this week, and it's turning into busy season in our office, so we'll be seeing more applications.
Motion to adjourn?
Can I just mention one thing before we adjourn? I was in Bob's yesterday, and I happened to be talking to one of the managers, and she said that they can't find a place. They want us, because I said, I hope you're staying in Enfield, and they said, she said they'd like to, but they can't find a place, and I was thinking, the perfect opportunity for somebody in economic development to scoot over there and see what they need, and see if there's anything that Enfield can offer them, because otherwise, we're going to lose them to another town. And I think that's what the economic development people should be doing, so that was just my one thought.
Bob's?
No, I, they lose their, I didn't...
No, that's where the Home Goods and the Ultra are going.
They're splitting it, right.
But the Bob's is not going out of business, they're just looking for a new site. They want to stay in, in Enfield.
The Enfield Square is 50% empty.
That's what I said for them.
Sears, Vets, J.C. Penney's, there's plenty of spaces for them.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be nice if somebody kind of held their hand through the process a little bit, just give them some suggestions? Otherwise, they're going to another town.
That's what economic development does.
Well, I thought they were going out of business, because I didn't figure they would just leave the place where everybody knows where it is.
They had no choice. They didn't get their rent for the...
Oh, oh, all right.
What happened? Oh, right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, ladies and...